I'm going to begin.
Sorry, I completely forgot about planning meeting today. Just realized.
Here we are. Okay, let me let us begin. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to COVID-19 virus and regulations imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purpose of planning board meetings. Meeting contained, the meeting information contained links necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. Public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Notice was also mailed to the item in Star Ledger, which publications are the official newspapers for the township of Milburn. Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston Halper?
Here.
Jorge Mascher Pio?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Hee VJ?
Yep.
Chairwoman Beth. Here. Thank you. And as far as I know, we have no recusals on any of the business tonight.
I'm not being called for.
Was Sanji not called in roll call? Eileen? What's that? You did not call Sanji.
He just ignored me completely.
How that happened?
Here.
Thank you. My mistake, sorry. I checked you off already, that's why. And now we are.
I know my presence is felt already.
Thank you. So, we have only two items on our agenda this evening. We are going to begin with the meeting minutes from the closed meeting session on February 17. And meeting, those meeting minutes were distributed to the board. And then I know, Dan, I don't know if you heard earlier, I was mentioning you had provided some comments, which Mr. Bouzak incorporated into his, into a revised version. However, he did not send those out to the full board. We just got them late last night. Dan, I don't know if you wanted to characterize them or have me go through it. They were your comments, so.
Go ahead, you can go through them. I think it's, it's pretty simple, very modest comments in the beginning, where I made the case that, that I felt the planning board was obligated to, to, to make the decision. I was asking if those words were appropriate, because I think they are. But more importantly, I think Ed had talked about our role as planning board members in terms of making, making comments and asking for the modifications and redesign of, of applications and, and, you know, particularly as they relate to buildings. And what is our role? And I think Ed gave us a clear definition of our role. So if you want to read that, I think that's probably more appropriate.
Sure. And so let me go ahead and I'll just read. He added a paragraph, for those of you who also have the notes, it's just at the end of the first page before the line that reads "a motion to return to public session." And so let me read what Ed is proposing inserting. "The attorney also briefly addressed the extent to which the board should get involved in, quote, 'redesigning or modifying of an applicant's proposed project.' Generally, the board is tasked with evaluating the project as designed and presented by the applicant. The board can offer constructive suggestions for improvement or modification, but must be careful to judge the applicant's project on its merits and not on what the board might like to have seen." And then he, and then that was the end of the comment. It says "a motion to return to public session was made and given carry." So that was the, the part of the addition that was changed. Did anybody have any further comments or corrections on the minutes from February 17? Okay. Um, and I believe we all participated, so if anybody could make a motion to approve these minutes with the change.
I wasn't part of the meeting. I was not part of the meeting.
Thank you, Jorge was not there. Thank you for clarifying. So you will abstain.
Have a message. February 17?
Yeah. I wasn't.
So Jorge, this was February 17th, and we had our meeting, then we went into a private session, and Ed spoke to us about sort of the roles of the planning board.
Yeah, that's the day that I was feeling not so well, and I couldn't be there.
Have you missed it here?
I thought you were there as well, but okay.
Well, maybe I, I'm. Okay, I don't know. I don't.
It's okay. You can also abstain if you choose to not vote on it.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Are we going to do all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. I, all in favor?
I.
I.
Joe, was that an I?
Yes.
Okay. And no, any opposed? Okay, and we'll have Jorge as an abstention for now.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So the meeting minutes of the February 17th closed session are approved. Thank you. Um, our second order of business on our agenda for tonight is the approval or review of, sorry, I don't have it up right now, I have the number up, of the proposed ordinance. Pull it up. 2577-21, but I would like to have it open in front of me as well. Okay, great. And we are blessed with Paul Phillips' presence tonight. Thank you, Paul, for joining us. It was pretty clear in the, in the word version, what was bold and underlined was as newly amended, and there were some minor crossouts, I think, near the end of strike-throughs. But Paul, if you want to quickly talk us through the B2 and B4 proposed changes.
Sure. So the primary charge of the board this evening is to basically weigh in on master plan consistency. It's, as you know, it's a requirement of the municipal land use law. But Beth, I don't know, would you like me to provide some context as to what is in the ordinance? And why? Would that help if I provided a framework for the board?
Absolutely, please do, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, feel free to keep it brief, and if there's more questions, we can go.
Okay. Understand that while I had input and probably can characterize myself as the primary author, others had input on this ordinance, including Alex McDonald and Kit Falcon also provided some input. And Eileen, I may need you if we get into the weeds on the history of restaurant regulation. I may need your help as well. But as the board is aware, the township has, over the last several years, taken a number of actions related to its business zones and the CBD zone, which is the B4 zone in particular. And as some of you who are on the board may also know that when we did the 2018 master plan, we made a number of recommendations, including some zoning changes, as well as one of the recommendations was the undertaking of the downtown vision study. And again, as some of you who are on the board may recall, in 2019, some modifications were made. We expanded the list of permitted uses in the B2, B3, and B4 zones. And we also, as, as you can recall, we increased the height to allow for three-story buildings in the B4 district, and that was all, I think, in 2019. So the administration is, is now moving forward with some additional zoning modifications. And if I had to characterize the intent, it's probably twofold. One is to respond to concerns that have been raised regarding the current zoning needing to be sort of more business-friendly. And secondly, one, the desire to, to basically put Milburn's business districts in a more competitive position going forward in terms of making sure they can attract the kind of businesses that are likely to locate in a, in a downtown setting. I would also point out that some of the things that are in here were actually echoed, if not advanced, by Perkins Eastman as part of their downtown vision study. So just briefly, and I'm going to start with the easiest first, which is, has to do with the modification to the parking requirement in the B4 district, again, the downtown district. And this has sort of been a, a little bit of a work in progress, just so that you kind of understand. 10 years ago, the downtown parking requirement was basically the parking requirement for any other business zone. We relaxed it 10 years ago, and we put in a waiver requirement. And that waiver requirement basically said that if you, if there's a change of use that doesn't trigger any increase in the parking requirement, that there is no need basically to seek variance relief. However, what has actually happened over the course of the last 10 years, there have been instances where you have a change of use from, let's say, retail to restaurant. And because the restaurant parking standard is based on seating as opposed to square footage, it trips that trigger. And basically, what it does is, is that the businesses, meaning restaurants, have had to apply to the reviewing board and seek relief. And typically, they've had to, they've been required to purchase municipal parking permits. And the administration wants to take that function and make it an administrative function as opposed to a board function. And the other consideration is, is that the administration was concerned that prospective businesses, meaning restaurants, had to go through the process of going to a board, it's time-consuming, it's expensive, and the feeling was that it wasn't business-friendly. So what we did basically in this ordinance is, we eliminated that trigger provision. And, and again, this is only the B4, the downtown business district. So there would be no additional parking requirement in the B4 for any change of use or occupancy that does not involve a building expansion. So in these instances where you go retail to restaurant, basically, the restaurant would not have to come before the board so long as it's not decreasing the current parking supply on that site, even if that parking supply is currently deficient. So that's the relaxation in terms of the downtown parking requirement. The second part of the amendment is, the list of permitted uses has again been expanded in the B4 district. As you recall, back in 2019, we included things like instructional schools and studios, showrooms, galleries, educational play centers. Now we've included, and this includes the other B districts, even though the focus was B4, brew pubs, theaters, museums, co-working space, shared workspace, and also allowable, certain allowable uses on the ground floor right now. Banks, financial institutions, and real estate offices are allowed. We included, we expanded that to include insurance brokers. And the last series of changes have to do with the, we've made modifications to the regulations governing restaurants. So this, this can be a little complicated, so I'm going to try and take my time with this. So the current zoning allows restaurants as a conditional use in B2, B3, and B4 zones. And these are, dry-thrus are expressly prohibited, okay? So the single condition that exists is that the closest part of the structure be at least 125 feet from the nearest lot line of a single-family dwelling in an adjoining residential district. If that condition is not met, then an applicant needs to obtain approval from the zoning board for a D3 variance. But that's not been the primary issue or problem here. The problem is that even if a restaurant is more than 125 feet from the nearest residential property line, because it is still only permitted as a conditional use based on the mandates of the municipal land use law, that restaurant applicant or user must initially file an application with the planning board, even, even though it meets the 125-foot standard. So again, a prospective restaurant user still has to spend time and effort and money to apply to the planning board. So what we're proposing here is to change the zoning so that restaurants that meet that 125-foot separation standard are permitted as a principal use, not conditional, principal permitted use, which means that it would eliminate any need to go to the planning board if the application is otherwise site plan exempt. At the same time, if the, the, this ordinance basically continues to keep as a conditional use restaurants that do not meet the 125-foot standard, but now it adds a series of actual conditional use standards that an applicant basically has to meet. If the conditions are met, the applicant does not have to go to the zoning board. If the conditions are not met, the applicant has to go to the zoning board, which is currently the case. There are just two sort of subtleties to that. One is, language has been added to the effect that the 125-foot requirement would not apply in those instances where the nearest residential lot is separated by a street or railroad right-of-way. And then, and there are, there aren't a lot of properties that would even come under that possible classification there, but there are some exceptions. And then secondly, while most of the B3 zone encompasses, encompasses properties along either Upper Milburn Avenue or Morris Turnpike, there is a section of the B3 zone that's on Chatham Road where restaurants are not permitted irrespective of the 125-foot standard, because they're not, that road is not either a primary or secondary road as classified in the master plan. So any restaurant there would still be a use variance. And by the way, this is how the ordinance reads currently. And Eileen, I hope I've got this all right. So if, if not, you'll say no.
No, I think that's basically how we.
Okay. So with that said, and I'll, I'll be happy to answer questions, but with that said, what I do want to just briefly address the issue of master plan consistency, which again is your primary charge this evening. And in the 2018 master plan update with regard to the land use plan element, there are specific recommendations, and I'm just going to kind of paraphrase them, as follows. To allow work share use in the B zones. To expand permitted uses in the B districts. To modify the land use regs to make them easier and less expensive for new businesses to open in Milburn. And finally, there is an express recommendation to revisit the parking requirement in the B4 zone and also consider reducing the parking requirements downtown. I think what's, as part of this ordinance, all fits those recommendations. So I think certainly the amendment before you, to me, is clearly not inconsistent with the master plan. And I think you can advocate so far as to say that it's substantially consistent with the master plan. So with that, I think now you have a framework for the amendment. And if there are any particular questions, I'll do my best to answer with Eileen's help perhaps.
Thank you, Paul. Did anybody have any specific questions, Mr. Bear?
Thanks, Beth. Paul, just, just define what you meant by, in the waiver parking requirement 607.4, that it becomes an administrative function versus a board function?
What, what, what? And they're, they're working on a general ordinance amendment, Dan, that I'm not working on. I think Kit's working on it. But they want to keep the issue of the parking permits to be sort of an annual administrative function that would be done, I guess, through Alex's office as opposed to the board making a decision as to who should purchase permits when they're before the board seeking relief from the parking standard.
Okay, I wish Alex the best.
Me too.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Gaston.
Got a question about the, the items underneath the conditional use. Are those really only applied to conditional uses, or are they applied to everything, even the primary or permitted principal uses?
Only the conditional use restaurant.
And what, wouldn't it, don't we want the other restaurants to do the same, though? Like, refuse shall be stored in a building or within an enclosed area? Commercial-grade air filtration, site lighting? Why did we pull this out from the, the principal uses?
Because what we wanted to do was provide basically two different classifications. We wanted to allow restaurants as, sort of as of right, as a principal permitted use where they met the 125-foot standard. Where they didn't, we basically wanted to create some conditional use standards, which don't presently exist. The only standard is the 125 feet. So that's why you have those six standards that are sort of designed to protect the immediately adjacent neighbors. But for restaurants that meet the 125 foot, there's no need to have those particular standards because of this, because they meet the separation requirement.
And we're certain about the separation requirement? To me, when I have some fumes or smoke coming from a restaurant, that 125 feet goes by really quickly.
Yeah, but again, the, so let me provide some context. There was even some thought as to simply make restaurants permitted in the B districts without keeping the spacing requirement that existed. And I think there was some sentiment that that might be too onerous upon immediately contiguous neighbors. So the sort of middle-ground position was, and again, we're trying to protect neighbors as well as be business-friendly and invite new restaurants to come in. And, and as I understand it, I'm not involved in this day-to-day, that a number of restaurants, there have been some issues. And it's costly to appear before the board and hire land use council and experts and so forth. So we tried to have these two classifications to kind of be fair to the business community as well as to the residents. And, you know, so we kept the 125-foot standard, even though there was some sentiment to just make restaurants permitted, which is, by the way, what most, all downtowns do. They don't have this separation requirement. The only instances I'm aware of where downtowns have the separation requirement is in connection with restaurants with dry-thrus. And here, we prohibit them, period. So again, we were trying to balance equities, Gaston, if you will. And this is basically the decision that the administrate, that the administration felt achieved that balance.
Right, but, okay, let's, let's, if we can, then look at them one by one. No outdoor seating. So if you have 125 feet in between, and you still have your seating all the way up to the buffer zone, does it really make a difference? Like, what, what is the point, then, of having that no outdoor seating if it's going to be at the same place that's 50 feet away from the neighbors?
Are you talking about the seating in the, you're talking about the seating in the, in the rear yard? What you?
Yeah, so, yeah, the.
Because you have, because you have the 125 feet, presumably, if you're going to introduce seating, you're going to have to be before the, you know, the, the planning board on a site plan application. And the, and the, and the board is going to be able to look at it, and they will have some ability to say, can you change this? Can you pull the seating back somewhat from the, from the buffer? But at some point, you have to, or else you're just not going to have any restaurants that are going to be able to come in as of right. And I, I don't think that's, that's the goal. And again, you understand that, you know, this isn't just me doing this, what I think is the right policy. This is the directive that I got from the administration to achieve that balance.
Right, okay. Well, this, I guess where I'm coming from is, we, we feel that this is good for, could be the same restaurant, but because they're not 125 feet, that they have to now have these things. Yes, it's an improvement to our downtown. No, it may not be an improvement for our neighbors. But to me, if it's going to be, you know, these should be applied to, to any restaurant then, rather than just ones that aren't 125 feet away. Because it can essentially degrade the character of the neighborhood, even though it's 125 feet away. But, so that, that's, I guess.
I want to say, I appreciate that comment. I think, well, what we are being asked to do, and I believe this is correct, but feel free to, somebody correct me, is, is to say whether we feel this is not inconsistent with the master plan and send it back to the TC. But I think we could also make that recommendation or ask them to consider, you know, applying these conditions to anything in the B4 if they so agree.
Okay. Okay, then if I can.
I mean, I'm open to that. I'm not saying we have to do that, but I, I'm open to considering that in our, you know, statement. I'm sorry, Maggie.
Just one thing. Just yesterday, I received notice that I'm affected by this. I back up to the B3, so I will have to abstain on this, because I've received notice from the town that I back up to it. So I think there's a little bit of a question there. I think it's best to be overly cautious, since I received notice. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe because we are going to vote on this as the whole ordinance, because it's, it's one, and I know there's three subsections to it, but I think that would apply to you for the whole ordinance then.
I think, yes, unless it were split up, there's nothing I can do on.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yes.
Go ahead, Gaston.
Yes, sorry, very quickly. And along with those, I know on a lot of the applications we've had, like the AAA one, we're worried about the lights. We're talking about buffers, sounds. Did we, why, why did we not do anything with the sounds or garbage trucks, or when you can, you know, have them come in and out? And also, let me do some, yeah, I, I guess, yeah, that was it. Just noises and trying to make sure that they're not affecting the neighborhoods either. But, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Paul, did that come up?
The garbage truck issues, the site plan, as it typically is, would be a, would be a site plan issue. With regard to noise, there are applicable statewide noise standards, which any applicant has to meet at the property line, daytime and nighttime decibel levels that they have to meet, so that safeguard is already in place.
Right, thank you.
Great. Jorge, I know you had your hand up before.
But then, actually, Paul already answered that.
Okay.
But, no, but I want to say something about what Gaston said. I totally agree that there shouldn't be any outdoor seating in the rear back on restaurants less than 125 feet. But I don't think that this should apply for all the restaurants. We already have many restaurants in town in B4 zone, which they have beautiful outdoor areas in the back. And I think we should allow them, because there is no residential use around them. So I agree with how it's reading today. I will not do any other recommendation.
Okay, so that's a counterpoint to what Gaston had, had suggested. Okay. Thank you. Sanji, go ahead.
So what, what we have just heard from Gaston and Jorge, of all these things we have heard, last year, the same ordinance was going in. It was going in to be a restaurant, not conditional use, just as a municipal use everywhere. And then we had Township actually repeal that, and then finally came up with a lot of thought process put in place. We still want to be easy on the business, but at the same time, want to be cautious wherever we can to help our resident on that, especially B3 zones. And all these conversations and discussion has had happened. And finally, we came up with this plan. And this plan, when, when we say, oh, outdoor seatings and all that, we are putting under conditional, it is because if it is within that 125, then we want to save our resident as much as we can, while keeping in mind that we want to open it up for the business. So this was, as, as Paul mentioned a little bit early, last year, it was completely going to be permitted use, and then we had to take it off, or I wasn't even there. They took it off. And then finally, we have come up with this new plan. And I, and I believe as well, there's always different, difference of opinions with everywhere. But finally, I think we have come up with a, with a plan that is workable, but that is doable. Different, difference of opinions with everywhere, but uh, finally, I think we have come up with a, with a plan that is workable, but that is doable. Uh, at least in my opinion.
Great, thank you. I, I think that's, yeah, it's a good, uh, also a little bit of a history of the context of how we got here. Um, because I believe um, we did receive the draft version of the last ordinance. We didn't have to meet on it, but we had seen that. Um, before I think it got withdrawn. Other comments or questions or, or responses to what um, kind of Jorge and Gaston were postulating on from anybody else? Okay. Um. So Gaston, I don't know if we can come back to you because I, I just want to see where your, your mind is at. I mean, I. I don't think there's a question of whether or not what is proposed is inconsistent with the master plan, but um, where you stand sort of on this. Um, the imposition to businesses if they are, you know, otherwise meeting the um. You know, the, the letter of the zoning ordinance.
Right, and I, I agree with Jorge on the outdoor seating. Uh, may, may not have been the, the best example that I picked, though this, you know, just picked one out. Uh, but I, I would actually like to know what everybody else feels about the refuse being stored. Like, to me, that's, that should be blanket. Whoever it is, it's got to be stored inside or outside, put it in locked containers if it's outside. Why it's just for ones that are less than one hundred and twenty-five feet, I have no idea. And again, the commercial grade air filtration. I had thought about opening a restaurant in Milburn myself. You know, and one of the things that I was concerned about is, yeah, what, what is going to happen to any fumes or anything that comes out, and I was going to put one on, but. To require it for ones that are only a hundred and twenty-five feet and not the other ones, I don't, I don't understand why. Um, but yeah, that, that's. Like, I just, yeah, I just, I guess I don't, me, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jorge.
No, I, in that I agree, but I don't know if there is anything in the, eh, eh, in the ordinance about in general for. And. All these refuse to be screened. There is a, I think there is something in the ordinance, right? Eh, Eileen? That all the refused area has to be screened from the. View from the public or something like that.
Is that correct, Eileen?
I believe there is something in there, and most of the restaurants currently have. Dumpster situations where, you know, they're pretty. I mean, our property maintenance, you know, he does go after them. Quite vigilantly if we get complaints that, you know, dumpsters are overflowing, you know, get them increased their pickup times. But um. I, I, we don't get that many complaints about it. I think, I don't think we have too many issues with the existing restaurants and um, their refuse.
So I guess overall, uh, sorry, Beth, I didn't want to go out of the turn, but if I may. So overall, what we are trying to do is make restaurant as a principal use instead of conditional use. Now, we are not changing any other. Things in there with restaurants, whatever rules that they're already in place will apply to all those restaurants. Um. Becoming a principal use. The focus was on if it is close to one twenty-five feet. Uh, everything else stays as is, uh, except conditional to principal. So if there is any other suggestions and all that, we can always make. Those suggestions, not only just as a planning board, we could also do it as residents. When these things are discussed, even in the TC meeting. Uh, everybody is there, everybody comes in, and that's how this overall ordinance have come into play. Uh, so whether, whether we do suggestion from here or even. Before it even comes here, I think it'll be a better way of uh, when the ordinance is in place, if you want something to be changed in there as well. Whether it's in line with the master plan or not, you still have a say as a resident. In the TC meeting, we can always go there and tell them and suggest them.
That, that may, that may be so. I, I do think that all these uh, new conditions, right, that they are in line with the master plan. It's trying to preserve, you know. Sanity for one thing of the, the residents. Um, and yeah, the character of the neighborhoods. Um, I guess, i- is it going to affect the ones though that aren't a hundred and twenty-five feet? By us putting the regulations in for the other ones, or then the other restaurant's going to come in and say, well, I don't have to do that because here it specifically states that. So is that then going to degrade anything for the residents or anybody, you know, nearby?
That probably is a question for Paul. Is that relaxing rules for the current restaurants that is out there in town?
What, the, the problem is right now. That a restaurant that meets the hundred twenty-five feet. Still has to go to the planning board because it's a conditional use. And um, so what is the planning board review? There, you know, it, and they, I know, Eileen. It, it goes to the board. What's, what's the basis of the review? The only standard out there is the hundred twenty-five foot standard. So what we're trying to do is not have every application go to a board. And what we really wanted to do was not have all the applications go to the zoning board. If we would have had those conditions extended to restaurants that meet the hundred twenty-five feet. You know, a lot of applications would go to the zoning board, and you'd, you'd really be in trouble in terms of getting new restaurants to open. You have to draw the line somewhere. The decision by the administration was to call that hundred twenty-five feet. And that's basically why we created standards for the hundred twenty-five feet and those, and no standards where you meet the hundred twenty-five feet. That was the logic.
Okay, but well, that's, that's good. I, I, I definitely like it, but then can we, like, we can look at. The first condition. I, I think everybody's going to meet that. They have to either store the waste inside or have it. Uh, in an enclosed area that's fenced off. Then, uh, do we, Eileen, do you know, do we uh, require air filtration on anybody's?
Honestly, the, like, the hoods, every time I've seen any restaurants that come in for tenant fit outs, I think they all put a hood system in if they're doing cooking. Um, but again, that's not, I don't look at that as a zoning issue. That really goes to the building. And, you know, the Board of Health. So I don't know the, the specifics of air filtration and that kind of thing.
Okay, and then I guess site lighting? I think we're going to, we would review that any maybe with the site plan, but I don't know if they have to come now for it if, if they're not so. Like, uh. Vegas restaurants that are hurt.
If they're, if.
Way it was, was written is that. The only condition was a hundred and twenty-five feet. So if you now want to put all these conditions on all the restaurants, then all the restaurants are still going to be conditional uses. You can't make them principal uses and, and say, but we want you to meet these conditions. That's conditional use. So then they're all going to the Board of Adjustment. So if you were trying to re, not relax, you were trying to. Make an atmosphere where restaurants didn't. Meet such. You know.
We're trying to lower the bar to entry to encourage business.
Which we have done with the new uses that we've been permitting. Um. But the hundred twenty-five foot line was always the condition, and you know, that like Paul said, there had to be a dividing line is. You know, this is a step in what we hope is the right direction. There might be. Tweaks further down the road, you know, this is, this is our starting point, and we really think this is uh. Good. Do the job we're hoping it does.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm, I'm a little mixed up. Wouldn't they only have to come before a board if they want the variance from those conditions?
If it's a conditional use, they come before us, and only if it's per- permitted, they don't. You may have, we may see a fully compliant. Conditional use. But if they're not seeking. Even if they're not seeking a variance, but if they're just a conditional use, they, they come before us.
But so what, what is then, what is stopping us from saying, even if it's a principal use? They have to adhere to all these rules, like it's, it's just part of an ordinance. To me, that's not something that people, somebody would have to come to a board, a board or before a board for.
And that, and that could be a separate ordinance, uh, whether we put it with this ordinance or later down the line, or it's already there, I'm not sure. But the thing is, the restaurant will only come here to the planning board if they are within that hundred and twenty-five feet. If they're not, they're not coming. And if they're coming here, what all are we looking at? Are all those conditions that we will actually make a judgment based upon. So it's not just. White line or, or gray areas. It's just clear to us what all are we looking at.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, other. Thoughts or comments or questions? Okay. Um. So it seems that we're collectively, I think, under Paul's discussion at a point of being able to. Make a vote on the planning board's position on whether the proposed ordinance. Twenty-five seventy-seven is. Not inconsistent with the master plan. Twenty-five seventy-seven dash twenty-one, I'm sorry. Um.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone to make a motion to. State just that?
I, I make the motion.
Second it.
Seconded by David Morrow. I mean, you're muted, but are we voting individually?
Yes. Um, Daniel Bear? Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Jorge Mascherino?
Yes.
Mark Matzle?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanji Benayak?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Shreeni Bijan?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, so thank you. But uh, Eileen, you will send the memo to Ms. Gotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. We have no other items on our agenda, um, but I do see that we have a member of our um, public who has a hand raised. Um, so before we move further or close the meeting, I'd like to offer that person the opportunity to come in. Just because this is atypical of normal in-person. J M P?
Yes, hi. Um, I'd like to just comment. Um, I was at the meeting.
Can I ask you to just introduce yourself? I, I, I just, I don't.
Sorry, Jean, we, Jean Pasternak, three, four, two, Hobart Avenue. I was at the planning board meeting, I'm sorry, the township committee meeting last night. I've also spoken to quite a few people in the Glenwood section. Um, that, you know, along Meadowbrook and other roads that, that would be considered, you know, adjacent to these um, secondary. Primary roads, and there's a consensus amongst all the citizens, and it's too late to, to obviously to. Give you this input since you just voted, but everyone was against this change in the uh. Um, I mean, to absolutely every single person I spoke to, and it was probably around forty people. Uh, that said that they were a hundred percent against this change. And they feel, and they've, actually, there was a gentleman, um, Mr. Mori Ali and his wife who spoke last night. They had spoken, they said to four or five different realtors who gave them confirmation that their property values would lower as a result of having this. Change in the uh, ordinance, so.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that that's said, and that you're, you, you unfortunately didn't get the opportunity to hear that. I also think it's important to note that uh, Ms. Miggins was present when there was a change to the ordinance, the prior meeting, grandfathering in Chatham Road. Uh, where she has an office. So I feel that there's a lot of conflict here, and I wanted to voice that, and I wanted to make sure. That all of you knew that people in the township who live in those areas that are going to be impacted. We're not consulted, and we're not given a chance to speak about this.
Thank you, Ms. Pasternak. I, I appreciate it. Um, as. I, I will just mention that our board is not charged with the same um, responsibilities and similarly the same. When it's an open application, that is when we welcome. Questions from the public as we did with the Chatham Road application and testimony. When it's something that is within our purview, such as reviewing an ordinance for consistency with the master plan, we are not approving this ordinance. Um, that is an internal thing, so um. I, obviously I brought you in because I couldn't see you. If it was in real life, it would have been a different circumstance, but we, we don't um. Open it to uh, public input for the planning board to review, or just supposed to review internally as we did with our planner. Um, so that is the rationale for that. So there is not a public comment session, as there never is um, a public. You know, new business uh, item on the agenda at our planning board meetings as there is with the township committee. Um, so I don't mean to cut you off, but I just want to give you that, that context and feedback from our side. Um, Mr. Bear?
Yeah, Beth, I believe that this goes back to the township committee for a second reading.
Absolutely.
They will have a public hearing, so people will be. Able to speak their piece at their, at the public hearing in front of the township committee.
Absolutely, and it's, it's in fact probably more important to speak at the township committee because they would be the ones to, to vote to uh, actually put it into. The ordinance. Thank you. Um. That said, we have no other orders of business tonight. Um, uh, the next meeting of the planning board is. Scheduled for, well, we're not ready to conclude yet. Um. The next meeting. Is not listed on the bottom of the agenda, I'm sorry.
June second.
Second, yeah.
Yeah, and second, thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn tonight?
I make the motion.
Moved by Sanjeev, seconded by Joe Steinberg.
We are.
That was quick today.
Our journeying our meeting at eight seventeen PM. We will see you on June second at seven thirty PM using the Zoom link, the same Zoom link that you used tonight.
Thank you.
Good night all.
Have a nice evening.
Night.